Um. Thanks, Allison. Um, this is the special meeting of the Open Space Board of Trustees to um, review and hopefully approve a statement to city council regarding the annexation of the property owned by the Boulder Valley School District at eight at sixty-five hundred Arapahoe Road. And the proposed IGA between the City of Boulder and the Boulder Valley School District. Um, as I call the role, please let us know that you're here. Michelle Estrada.
Here.
John Carroll.
Present.
Dave Kunz.
Here.
And I'm Karen Holwig, and I'm the Chair of the Open Space Board of Trustees.
Karen, I just want to make note that Caroline is is not present.
That's correct. Um, and I spoke, I I checked in with her this weekend and learned that she would not be here, so. Uh, that's as expected. Um, so we have a three-page draft to work from. Uh, with, as Michelle said a few minutes ago, the goal of this meeting is to find out whether the Open Space Board of Trustees will approve a statement to council regarding the annexation. Um, and I'd like to just work through that uh, draft statement and find out whether there are anything, there's anything that uh is totally objected to that needs to be removed, whether there are revisions that need to be made, or whether it can be accepted as is. So, um. I I I'm assuming that you've all read the draft, is that correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Good, okay, so I won't uh, I won't go through the draft itself. It has also been posted online, so those who are observing the meeting um, have a copy of it in hand.
So, Leni, can I start Karen? Because I know we only scheduled thirty minutes, and I do have a hard stop at three-thirty. I have a work emergency that I have to deal with. Um, we, you know, um, thank you for for um, drafting this. I know you took some time over your weekend, um, but in totality, it's it's not something that I can support. Um, the the letter goes too far beyond what I believe to be true. And um, and I don't think it's possible to reconcile our differences in the twenty-four minutes that we have left. Um, now, I just want to pose that if this is, that this is an option, that you and Dave can write council as individuals. Um, that is an option, but with you, we want to, and John, I don't know how you feel about it, um, try to to reconcile that in this short time. I I'm game, but there's a lot here.
Can you say something, Michelle, about what you disagree with or oppose?
Yeah, I mean, I, well, first of all, this is a very meaty topic to to uh study up on in the however many days that we've had. I I did my best to read the hundred and sixty pages, and I'm familiar with the site because my kids go to the Thorn camp. Um, and um, and but but I also read the the um, the IGA and the the staff comments, and I believe that a lot of the issues that were raised by the the neighbors um, through their emails have been addressed um, to the best of the the ability of of uh all the staff.
Okay, I I'd like to go back to the the very beginning of the draft, which uh addresses the first question that council is supposed to address tonight or tomorrow, uh Thursday night, which is um, it is what's proposed consistent with the Boulder Valley Comp Plan policies. And I've listed the four policies for which um, I didn't perceive it to be consistent. Do you have objections with that?
Well, I think we should back up because, John, is this something that you want to dive into?
Uh, um, I, my take was pretty similar reading through it. Um, I I think the letter goes a bit too far in terms of, you know, what our charter is and what we're supposed to be looking at. Um, you know, I, I, I went through the doc and I found that um, you know, there there was part of page two that I was comfortable with, but in general, overall, the majority of the document I I wasn't uh comfortable signing on to. And like Michelle, I was really impressed with the links that um, council and the county uh and the school district have gone to in the annexation agreement to, you know, both protect the environment and the neighbors around there, most of which have been addressed, um, especially the points uh that were brought up at the end around soundproofing, traffic, um, you know, and and a lot of the other points that were brought up there. Um, uh, so to me, I I think there may be a fundamental uh disagreement in terms of, you know, whether or not we want to sign on to this. Um, I think there's something there I would sign on to, but you know, there there's not much of the letter left at that point.
Can you tell me what it is that you would sign on to?
Um, potentially, starting at the last paragraph on the first page.
Mm-hmm.
And then halfway through the second to last paragraph on the last page, I would end at the Open Space Trustees urged city council. Um, that last sentence I wasn't comfortable with. Uh, and everything beyond that as well.
Uh, I I'm sorry, I didn't get where you would end. You would end after the the Open Space Trustees urged city council to continue to support?
Uh, before that.
Before that.
There's a paragraph that starts the important educational opportunities.
I I'm I'm with where John's describing. I I think I've got it. Um. So, I what I take from that is that you um, the description of the value, the natural values of this property and the investment that OSMP has made in it and its use for educational purposes are all parts of the document that you support.
Yes, I I I would agree, and all all of that tends to be very factual. Um, you know, and if if I was to sign on to it, I'd probably, you know, add something at the end about um, how we're supportive of the limitations and protections that are in the annexation agreement, and that we certainly would not like to see any of those go away.
So you feel that they need to be implemented, right?
Uh, as written in the annexation agreement, yes.
Karen, do you want me to share my screen with the letter?
Um. I, I think maybe right now it's more important for us to look at each other and and have this conversation, so hold on just a minute, we may get there. Um, so, John, tell me a little bit about the part before you, the part that you've delineated um about the Boulder Valley Comp Plan policies.
Um, I, I believe that all of those have been incorporated into their planning uh based on what I read.
I mean, I don't find these things inconsistent with the the comp plan. I mean, yes, it is adjacent to to wetlands um, and and repair and protection, but I but I think we the there's a fundamental disagreement that you state here that is not consistent with our, with the um four policies, and this is probably something that we could talk about for a really long time in debate.
So, Michelle, are you okay with what John outlined?
So, what John outlined to to recap is striking pretty much everything up until the point of the last paragraph on the first page. Yes, I agree with that. Um, the second page, um, I think you said is that you would start at the board has two primary concerns, is that right, John?
I think, well, all the way down the second page, ending uh at uh, Sembrough Marsh in twenty-twenty-one.
Correct, yes. What Karen said.
So, uh, leave everything up until Sembrough Marsh twenty-twenty-one. I'm sorry, I lost you. Oh, I see. Okay, and then the leave the last, I see, the last sentence, I'm sorry, strike the last sentence of that paragraph. Yep, I'm 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 with you there, John.
So you're okay with that, Michelle? I mean, with that. Okay.
I won't nitpick it, but that that statement about the being in partnership with BVSD is a given, and and BVSD is in the business of education. So, but I'll I'll I won't nitpick that.
Um. One of my significant concerns is about the use of of roads, uh, Street sixty-three. And the the uh adjacency and impact that that has could have on the marsh, given the the industrial nature of the traffic. Um. I'm gonna try to share the
Well, Karen's, while Karen's doing that, John and Michelle, would you be willing to consider language that raised questions or uh reiterated the board's uh interest in making sure that the sixty-third street access and the facility citing uh um, was done or considered all the pertinent factors? I I guess the the question is, is there any flexibility in the access and citing? Now, I guess that's the real question.
I'm not willing to say that I'm questioning the site location and and the road access.
And it, the one of my concerns on sixty-third street is its proximity to the educational center and, you know, the the use by that of schoolkids and and all of that, and and so I think I I guess I'm wondering, why aren't we more concerned about potential safety issues related to increased vehicle use a- as it relates to the uh public use of the marsh property?
Well, I would say that we're not the the Transportation Advisory Board. Um, and my expertise is not in road construction and safety, although I will say that my kids spend a lot of time there, and I'm okay with them with with this there. And and they're ten years old.
Okay. And
I I just put up a a picture of this sixty-third street and adjacent to the marsh on the screen. I don't know if you can see that or not.
Yeah, we can.
Okay, it it's the the additional industrial traffic that will be going to and from the modular factory and the impacts from that factory on the marsh that concerns me about using this road that obviously is, what is that, three or four feet from the marsh property?
Yeah.
I I see that. Uh, what I see also, Karen, is that staff, um, one of the the bullet points that Bethany has sent us is request that BVSD pave the road extension from sixty-third across the site to city standard, including stormwater control, or otherwise improve the road as approved by the city to control dust deposition impacts to Sembrough Marsh. So I feel like the the staff has covered that.
I I agree with the statement that you just read, but in addition to that, as you know, there are lots of fluids from vehicles that end up on the road that when it rains get washed off the road. Um, and given the distance we have here between the road and the marsh property, um.
And, uh, I mean, would it be fair to say, I I read that same thing that Michelle did, and it requires that all of those storm drains on the street be drained to the city sewer system, you know, away from the marsh? Um, would it be agreeable to reiterate that, you know, that we would love to see this ask implemented and not taken out for some reason? Because I I agree with Michelle, I feel like uh that concern has been addressed in the current agreement, and I think I would hope all four of us could say we would love to see see that implemented and not go away, right? Um. But i- is that potentially something we could agree to?
Yeah, my question is, given the space there. Um. I I would like to, if if we were gonna say something like that, John, I would like to say, given the limited space between the road and the boundary of the marsh property. Um. It's really critical that that work be done and diverted away from draining into the marsh.
Well, we could say something like, yeah, that is essential, uh, you know, kind of reiterate what John and Michelle have said about, you know, what the the staff has has uh recommended and is in the draft uh agreement. Uh, so we could reiterate the, you know, essential need to have that happen. And it strikes me that um, I I I am, I still wonder why a more direct access to the site uh was was not selected, but if that means that, if this means that we can get agreement uh on the board, then I think if we reiterate the essential need to do what has been identified, uh, I can go with that.
So what you're saying is reiterating the the four bullet points that um Bethany had sent us that OSMP of OSMP's requests?
Well, we can ref, I don't know.
I I let me, let me repeat what I heard John say and see if this works. Um, that we support the the limitations to the annexation agreement um, and then cite Bethany's document. Um, and because of the the adjacent because of how close the road is to the marsh property, we think it is essential for those limitations to be implemented and not taken out of the agreement or uh not not removed.
Yeah, Karen, I don't think we need to add that last phrase, it's just that they need to be implemented and
Yep.
Leave it at that.
Yeah, and and in my mind, we're just conveying the importance of, you know, the Open Space Department's asked thing, like, hey, these are really important things that uh, OSMP has asked for in the agreement, you all have put them there, we think they're great. You know, and and we want to see them implemented.
Are you okay with that, Karen?
Okay, um, the other thing that concerns me is um, the need to to underscore the the importance of preventing surface disturbance in the marsh. And that's because of past history, because it's be, it has been in the past a dumping ground for excess asphalt um, and other waste products, because it's it's just like the area across from my townhouse, which is open space land, and it's there, so all the yard guys dump clippings there and everything else, and I think it's important to have a statement that says um, no surface disturbance in the marsh will be permitted.
Yeah, Karen, I don't think you want to uh put language in the marsh, because I don't think that's that's e- even a an issue. I think it's on open space land.
Okay.
Yeah, it would be illegal for them to come and dump or disturb OSMP-managed lands, so.
Right, right.
Just like it would be for any for any neighbors to do the same. I mean, they would be treated like any other property owner in terms of their ability to utilize our lands in that way.
Okay. Is there anything else about the building or the visual screening of it from the marsh?
There's, there is nothing out of those bullet points that I would include.
Yes, I I I would echo that as well. I'm only comfortable reiterating what uh was in Bethany's email.
Are you comfortable reiterating? I I don't see it in this part that we've cut off. Um. Oh, it is there, okay. Okay, where are we, Dave?
Well, I think we we can arrive at agreement on uh the text, and I don't know whether we need to draft what we just talked about. Uh, I I mean, I know we need to do that. Um, but who might do that? But we probably ought to draft the language that we talked about just now, so that we agree that that should be in the document. And then it sounds like uh we're not gonna get agreement on listing uh specific requirements. Um, so I, we'll we'll go with, from my perspective, we should go with uh then what we've agreed to.
So if you agree to all that, I I in my, I do have a a redlined here version here that I could I could put up that I think follows everything that we just discussed.
Uh, do you have language, uh, Michelle, on kind of what we talked about as far as reiterating support for the uh staff's comments, et cetera?
Yeah, I copied those bullet points in here. Do you, would you like me to share that? Oh, I can't share. I'm not allowed to. You cannot share share screen while the other participant is sharing. Oh, Karen, I think.
Yeah, Karen, if you could stop sharing.
I have stopped sharing.
We, it's taken us years to get you to understand the concept of sharing, Karen.
Not telling you to not. Um, okay, hopefully, I have up the version that shows red lines. I have two versions, I have three screens, so.
This this looks right.
This is right, okay, so I I think that's blue. Um. Some minor revisions here, but the this next one says, in consideration of the above item, would like to remind council members and the BVSD of the value of Sembrough Marsh and underscore Open Space Mountain Park staff's requests. Um, I struck all what I thought we agreed to. Um, and then left Sembrough Marsh as a unique valuable wetland, actually, yeah. Um, hopefully I did that right. Oh, no, no, I'm sorry, I gotta put that sentence about BVSD back in there. Sorry about that.
No, there needs, it needs the paragraph. No, that's, the paragraph begins the natural significance. There it is.
No, it uh
Oh, you're suggesting, Michelle, that we leave the first sentence and then jump to the next one?
Yeah, that's what I was originally thinking, because I I thought that this was uh a given, the educational values of of BVSD, but so I I I had cut that off, but I'm happy to put that back in there.
Well, there's a, there's a paragraph that John suggested keeping at the end that says that, so I I it looks like you've cut that. I would suggest that you leave Sembrough Marsh, it's a unique valuable wetland, and then go to the natural significance below. And take the part that's highlighted in yellow and paste it at the very end. Whoops. It's somewhere. Go all the way down, keep going down. After the natural areas paragraph, paste in the yellow thing beneath that, after the goals, yep. Perfect, right there.
I'm gonna put Lee out of a job here.
Uh, that's right.
She would be happy about it.
Okay, keep going, keep going down.
Looks good.
Okay, go down, okay, so that's all the same.
Yeah, keep going down after the yellow. And then I think after the yellow is where we need to insert OSBT supports. Can you just start a new paragraph after the yellow?
You could say this, the staff uh comments, and then then do a colon.
OSMP.
And then do a colon.
Yeah. And then insert the bullets.
Uh, if I could just make a request here, one thing I just don't want to do is confuse council of how our staff is coming forward at this time versus that we provided comments previously to planning staff. Because the way I'm kind of reading this now, it sort of looks like staff is coming forward to council at this time, so if there's a way to basically say OSMP supports OSMP's previous staff comments they have provided to the planning.
If we just, how about if we just give the date?
Well, I think, I'm not sure, I would have to get, check in with Bethany, but you know, some some of these statements have maybe have been made over a series of different meetings, but um, I don't think there's one partic, one set date.
Yeah, I think that's that clears it up again, although, Michelle, you got it, uh, previously should come after staff, it's not previously staff, it's the previous comments.
Of course, OSMP.
OSMP staff's previous comments.
Yeah, it would be plural. Well, stat, I guess, yeah, staff is, yeah, previous, yeah, previously submitted comments.
And and I I guess it would be submitted um over the development review um process or timeline, so that's sort of when we provided it.
Right.
Over development.
Review period.
Review period.
Oh, over the development review period.
Yeah, there should be a the after uh over, Michelle.
Okay, Lee, I can keep her job. I suck. Uh, previously submitted comments over the development review period, and then I just copied those verbatim.
Uh, maybe uh uh between comments and over, they provided um, serious comments they provided. Yeah. Or and maybe during the development review period, I think that might might get, okay, that's perfect.
You see submitted comments. All right. A little bit of grammar there, but. I I think it just needs something that they provided during.
I think that's fine.
Okay. So.
But can you scroll back, scroll back down?
Okay.
Uh, say at the end then, uh, Michelle?
Yep, that's end.
We should say, thank you for, you know, consideration, you know, blah, blah, blah of our comments.
Um, okay, so then I put up here who was present. Um. Following unanimously approved, we're gonna, we're gonna need a motion quickly here, um, was approved unanimously unanimously.
So you should uh remove the word statement in the beginning, you know, the third uh word and put motion, the following motion. And I don't know whether we put Car- Caroline absent or not, but um.
That's the way most of the meetings that I've seen. That's the way most of the meetings that I've seen recently have been done.
I, I think we should.
In, instead of the question marks, just put parentheses, Caroline Miller was absent.
Yeah, because there might be a question of, uh.
No, not there. No, 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 no. After the question marks, after John Carroll's name.
Yeah, remove the question marks, although they might as- associate with John, but, uh, yeah, right. And then a period.
Good.
Yeah, great.
Okay, so who would like to make this motion?
I so move.
I'll second.
Um, Leah, do you, or I don't know, do you want a specific motion language? It's a little, probably a little different, uh.
Leah's not on the call.
Okay.
Who you're talking to.
I got a feeling you're gonna turn to me now, Dave.
Any minute.
You're the, you're the last staff person.
But what if we just left that as a statement rather than trying to verbatim cover the motion here?
I think that's a great idea. I subscribe to that.
Okay, I'm good. Okay, right.
So where, the motion is to approve the statement, right?
Yes. So that friendly amendment, Dave, is that your motion is to approve the statement?
Yeah, absolutely.
And we need a roll call?
We should.
Okay, John.
I'm, I'm on mute, yes, yes.
I can hear you're on mute.
Well, Caroline's absent.
I, I'm sorry, Michelle.
Yes, I, I, I approve.
Yes.
And I vote yes as well.
If I could just a couple of, of, of ten seconds, so, um, I believe this form should be submitted through the normal council form. Sort of process, Karen, um, as staff happy to support you in that if you're gonna take that on. And then also, this is a public hearing, so we were talking last week how you, you might have to get on the waitlist. Well, public hearing, anybody that wants to speak can speak. But there is a sign up for that. So if you're, if anybody is provide, going to be present to comment about this statement at the meeting. Or if it's just gonna be submitting the statement, I'm not so sure how the board wants to go as far as presence at the council meeting.
That's a good question we need to resolve. Leah had said that she would ask, um. If the board could have more, three minutes or more than three minutes, and I don't know what she's heard back yet.
Yeah, it looks like, uh, it'll be, uh. Uh, council cert- could certainly ask for anything beyond that, but I think it would be the normal. Two or three minutes, whatever set aside at that meeting time is what you would be allotted to. And then to submit the form would be pretty much the standard procedure for, uh, how forms are submitted to council or statements, so.
So that's what staff told her when she asked about the council meeting?
Uh, yes, I, I got that clarification today.
Okay.
Uh, before we were trying to answer that Wednesday night, I, I, I think we didn't realize. We were wondering if this had to be done during the open comment period in which there is a lottery and a set amount, but since it's a public hearing, it's pretty much the standard. Way of signing up for the public hearing and, and. Your name will be called.
So let me make a suggestion. I, I think, uh, we should submit this as a written comment through the, you know, formal process. And then Karen, if you do want to, you know, make this as a comment, this is more than a, a three minute. Comment, uh, so it might be that your comment refers to this and then picks the salient. Parts of it that you would like to verbally present. So that we have the full statement in the record. But, and then you, then the public comment referring to it, but I don't think we can do the whole thing in three minutes.
I agree with you. I think it'll take a little bit longer than three minutes based on my.
So if you, if, if you're intending to comment, you might just kind of, you know.
I would, what I would do is edit it down to.
Right, edit it down, right, right. And refer to it in your comments, but, yeah.
So may I email you this, Karen, and then you can, um, accept. Or do we have to do it in this meeting? So it doesn't, are you now, you and I now a subcommittee that can then move, you can submit it?
I think we can do it offline and I think if you email it to me as an attachment, I can work from this document.
Okay, great.
And the, the, the part that's highlighted in yellow is intended to be part of the statement, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Michelle, could you include me just as a C C so I have the final statement as well?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you guys very much. I think this is great and I really appreciate, uh, all the work that we just did, um. And I think it'll be very, uh, helpful. It was a thoughtful effort.
Thank, thanks, you all.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye bye.
Okay, see ya.